City Council, as always, we start with a pledge to our flag. Councilmember Harold, would you lead us?
I'd be honored.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. And for roll call this evening, we have all seven members of the Wenatchee City Council present tonight. So before we get to citizen comment, I know we've got a few members of the citizens that want to come up and address the city council. I'd like to ask Caroline Sullivan to come up if she could for just a minute. You guys remember Caroline? She was the one that read Poppy Days. And we didn't get a chance to hear all of that very well because her audio was not working at all. But I wanted you to come back. How are you? Nice to see you. There's the proclamation of the mother who doesn't live home with her. And can you, do we have a microphone? Is this working?
Yeah, we're gonna get it.
Is this gonna work? We gotta turn it on?
Yeah.
Thank you. So tell me your family story, because you were telling stuff about your family that all served in the military. So can you remind the council what you said that day? Because that part I couldn't hear very well.
Um.
Can you hold it? It's all right.
Oh, well, I've had many family members who've served in the military, including my dad. He served 25 years in the Navy. And I've had a lot more family members in the Navy.
And where do you go to school?
I go to Cascade Christian Academy.
Excellent. Any questions for Caroline, wish she was here? I just wanted her to know that what you read the other day was very special, but we didn't get to hear it all. And I really wanted to honor you and your family for all your great work. So thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, Mom. All right. Thanks, Caroline. All right. So anybody else wish to address the city council on something that's not on tonight's agenda? I know we have a family over here that would like to and maybe some others. So we would ask that you come up, give us your name and address in a couple of minutes. Sir, you want to go first?
This is the time for items that are not on the agenda, true?
Or on the agenda, depending on what you, what do you want to talk to us about?
I don't have anything on the agenda that I want to talk to you. Well, I mean, it's not on your agenda.
Oh.
Not my agenda.
Yeah, come on. Yeah. Give you a couple of minutes and give us your name and address for the record.
Well, Nathan Scott, I'm a resident of East Wenatchee. But of course, as you can imagine, I frequent Wenatchee quite often. So yes, is it possible, I don't want to mention this nonprofit's name out loud, but can I give this document to you to maybe give to someone?
Want to give it to me right now? Coming up.
Yes.
I'll grab it.
Thank you. Well, if I didn't say so, good afternoon. And before I forget, I hope everybody's having a great week. Hope everybody has a great Memorial Day weekend. Safe, nice weather, get to enjoy the area that we live in. First of all, I want to let you know that I researched the nonprofit foundation, which I've highlighted on that document right there, by way of their active website, their Facebook page, the IRS's tax-exempt organization search, the Washington Secretary of State, the Department of Revenue, even referencing articles found in the Wenatchee Business Journal and the Wenatchee World. And I did this because I wanted to know the organization that was behind the banners that are going to be posted, displayed here in the city in the next few days. So when I went, I could not find any filed 990s. The state's required annual reports have not been filed recently. And in fact, this nonprofit is actually dissolved, according to the Secretary of State. Articles in local journals and newspapers indicate that items were sold for net profit. But when I contacted the DOR, no taxes have been paid, no filings have been issued. And so it's one of those things where I have nothing against a nonprofit. In fact, I like the fact that we can offer favorable status to nonprofits at the federal and state level. But when a nonprofit will not comply with this very simple, low-cost filings, I have to question why the citizens of any community would want to front the cost to display those banners that they tend, that they then turn around and say, well, if you give us more money, we can get more banners. And the cycle just keeps on going round and round. Now, I've been to their website, like I mentioned, their Facebook page. I cannot see, I'm a private citizen, so I can only go so deep, but I cannot see where they are fulfilling the objective they have as being a nonprofit. In fact, I have lots of questions, if you will. And I know if I ran a nonprofit, no matter how great or small, I would want the community that's giving me money to know that I am operating the organization well, I'm fulfilling my obligations, I'm not just misusing or misappropriating money, whether that's real or perceived. And so I would be, I would be displaying, I would be promoting what I'm doing, that I'm fulfilling my objective and my mission. I would be also offering, I would be performing accounting services with an independent auditor to basically say, yes, I'm upfront, I'm good to go. So my ask is this. I checked recently, as of yesterday, and it was still the way I'm claiming it is. Do your own research, but it's my request that the city not use taxpayer money to display these banners if you find out what I'm telling you is true. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nathan. Appreciate you being here tonight. Who else would like to address the city council on something that's either on today's agenda or not on today's agenda? Come on up.
Hello, everybody.
Name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Christy Childs, and I live at 1537 Skyline Drive in Wenatchee. And I am here along with my four children, Judah, Charlie, Des, Ollie, ranging from eight to three, and two of our neighbors, Mark and Carol Reinhardt. And we are addressing the, we live on Skyline, so it is fitting that we are addressing Skyline Drive and the Skyline Drive overlook, safety and behavior, et cetera. So like I said, we've been living up there for about a year. We feel very privileged that we are able to be there. I understand that it's a nice road and very thankful that we have the opportunity to live there with our children. But we have a wonderful view of the city, and we have a wonderful view of the Skyline Drive overlook city park, which was cool at first. I'm like, this is amazing. We have people who can come and park. And it was confusing when the first night, we fell asleep there. We were woken up at about 1:00 in the morning with a base shaking my bed. I was like, what is this? And come to find, it is a wonderful city park, and I think it's an amazing opportunity for citizens of that whole surrounding area to be able to walk or drive and take in the skyline, because I am so thankful to have the opportunity to live there. But there's very few houses, and they are expensive. And so I'm, I am thankful that there is the place for people also who can't hike. Like, there's the Jacobson Preserve right there. So if you're able-bodied and able to get up to the top, you can take in the views. But if you're needing to drive, there's that parking spot. And it seems like while the intention of the overlook is for people to park and enjoy the city, and even I know that the, the name, nickname is Pecker's Point, so make out, whatever. But it definitely seems like it's been taken over by a bit of an illicit drug, sex, and alcohol culture, where, you know, getting a front row seat, I mean, I would say every day, multiple times a day, sometimes it feels like all day long, especially around 4:00 PM to anywhere 10, 11, 12 at night. It just becomes a state, city sanctioned party zone where there are alleged, I haven't, I told Mr. Mayor, I haven't done a sting operation where I've tried to actually drive, buy drugs. So I don't know that you can actually get drugs there, but I don't want to do that because I don't know how, I've never done it. And also, it's illegal, and I don't want to. But, but just the fact that you see cars park, other parks come, some things exchanged, people leave, or they're just smoking, partying. My family and I, my kids can attest to this, pick up trash along the road and at the overlook very frequently, and it's liquor bottles, alcohol bottles. Yes, some could take away vape pens and used condoms, which I always use gloves now because gross. But it just seems like it is definitely taking over the overlook where the original plan of the overlook for citizens to come, take in the look, have a peaceful evening, afternoon, has been really stolen from the rest of the citizens because it is so loud. And yes, we, once I learned about the non-emergency police, I was very nervous to call the first time because I don't call the police very often, because I don't want to waste police time or personnel or money. But I mean, yo, I call all the time now. I'm like, because I was told when I talked to Mr., what was his name? Mr. Erickson, the Parks Director, that you have to call to get it in the record. And so I feel bad that I call all the time. I'm like, people are partying, people are breaking bottles, people are jumping, people are really loud. And like, I definitely feel like I'm taking on the Karen personality, and I don't enjoy that about myself. But at the same time, it's really hard when you live there and you can't walk the street with your kids. I can walk on my own, but I cannot walk with kids. And I often can't even let the kids play outside because it is so loud, the music is so obscene. And oftentimes, police are caught up in more important issues, and they can't come by whenever. And because of the nature of, if there's any sort of like sexual nature exchanged or drugs, people don't stay long. And so if it takes half an hour for the police to come, a lot of times, the vehicles in question have left. So it just feels like it's being misused for the wrong people. And I understand some, like, so my best-case scenario would be a three-point plan. One would be temporarily just put up some fences, shut down the overlook while a plan is made, and hopefully break the habit where the default of students who are skipping class at high school go over, do whatever they're going to do, and then leave. And then in my best-case scenario, we would then install some speed bumps, which I have talked to Mr. Harmon, who has said speed bumps are very tricky with snowplows, or even rubber speed bumps that you can put in seasonally to help the speed racing. Because the side effect of having the overlook there is that people are going so fast in and out of there, zooming in and out, burning rubber. And like, those drivers are very dangerous. And it seems like a little bit of a race against time till someone is injured. And I know there's been times where cars that couldn't run, I've had to jump to the side of the road, and I have a bad back. I was actually just in the hospital getting procedure done this morning, and I can't move very fast. And so it's not a safe place for kids to be. And then in my, my third point of my best-case scenario would be in 2018, this had come up before city council, and there was actually a plan for instead of having approximately 20 cars facing the city, it was about five cars, parallel parking with a one-way that came up from Red Apple and then down towards Canyon 1. So people aren't pulling out and doing these weird turns in the road, kind of making for a dangerous position. Maybe it would even help people pulling into my driveway who are halfway in dress, making out with their boyfriends, that my kids see, and I'm like, ah, kids, go inside. Now, I understand that all of these things take time and money, and I definitely want to respect the time and money of the city. But I also believe that if this has been a problem that has been a thorn in our flesh in everyone on that roads for a while, it's silly to just complain about it to my husband and myself and not try to come and bring it before you all to let you know where we are at. And I just think that in, so the temporary shutdown, though, I think could happen regardless. It would cost very little money. And it could even be a temporary shutdown just in the evenings to try to break the habit. Because right now, there is a habit and culture built up around the overlook where, again, people by default, when you don't know what you're going to do, you go up there, you meet up with your friends, there's always your friends there, and it just kind of becomes, okay, meeting up with friends at the park is a good thing to do. I do that with my moms all the time. But I realize how that sounds, ain't it? But when it's illicit behavior, it becomes this party culture that if it was temporarily shut down, at least possibly it could break the habit. And who knows? Maybe it would even give these kids a pause of what to do with their time. And maybe if they think about it for two seconds, they might find something better to do. And then maybe there could be time later for the overlook, the one-way turnout. And speed bumps would still be ideal, but I understand that those might not be possible with the snowplows and everything. So I just would love to be able to change the culture, share the road, and share it with everyone in the town. So thank you very much.
Christy, thank you. We were talking before, and I'll get a group together with our Chief of Police and Mr. Erickson and our road crew, and we'll talk about with the council what sort of things we can do in the interim that might change some of those behaviors. I know we've got a camera up there, but that's only good if people are watching it and, and we're there to be able, like you say, to be close to do something. So we will sit down and come up with some sort of a plan and try to communicate that with you in the next couple of weeks.
Well, regardless, thank you so much for your time and giving us an opportunity to share our concerns.
Thank you for bringing your lovely family with you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Christy. All right. Anybody else wish to address the city council on something that's either on or not on today's agenda? Seeing no other takers, we are going to start with our consent items, which would be motions to approve today's agenda, vouchers in the minutes from our previous meeting, and to name some folks to the Association of Washington Cities Meeting, and to approve some work on the Kenzie's Landing Project. So entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda voucher in minutes from previous meetings, as well as a motion for the city council to approve resolution number 2023-12, appointing three council members as voting representatives on behalf of the city of Wenatchee at the Association of Washington Cities Annual Conference and Business Meetings for 2023, and a motion for city council to accept the work performed by Olin Excavation on the Kenzie's Landing Project as complete, and authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certificate.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Roger Nastatian, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt this evening's consent items, including the agenda vouchers and our minutes from the previous meetings, to approve resolution 2023-12, appointing three council members as voting representatives on behalf of the city of Wenatchee at the Association of Washington Cities Annual Conference and Business Meeting for 2023, and to accept the work performed by Olin Excavation on the Kenzie's Landing Project as complete, and authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certificate. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have three presentations tonight. The first is regarding Memorial Day. And Travis Hornby, would you read that into the record, please?
Yes, Your Honor, my pleasure. Proclamation, whereas since the inception of our country by the establishment of the United States Constitution, it has on occasion been necessary to protect the concepts of the Constitution. And whereas at times, it becomes necessary to resort to armed conflict to protect these concepts, which give each citizen of the United States certain enalienable rights. And whereas citizens of our great country have been given, have given of their lives in the protection of these unenalienable rights. And whereas each year, we set aside one day in which we can, I'm losing my track here, sorry, revive the memory of those who have sacrificed and those who have passed on. Now therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim May 29, 2023, as Memorial Day in the city of Wenatchee, and I urge all citizens to join us in honoring their memory. And witness therefore, I have caused a seal of city of Wenatchee to be affixed on the 25th day of May 2023. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hornby. Is anybody here from the Memorial Day folks? I don't see anybody. I will be at the Wenatchee Cemetery at 9:00 AM. I'll be at the Black Bridge at 10:00 AM to drop a wreath. And then I believe the East Wenatchee Ceremony is at 11:00 AM at the East Wenatchee Cemetery. So I encourage all of you to participate in that. Next up is a Pride Month proclamation. Mark Koulas.
Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots which occurred in June of 1969, and are generally recognized as the catalyst of the LGBT rights movement. And whereas every individual is equal before and under the law, and has the right to equal protection and equal benefit of the law without discrimination based on race, national or ethnic origin, color, religion, sex, age, or mental or physical disability. And whereas the long and ongoing struggle to transgender, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and other sexual minorities for basic civil rights and human rights continues to provide inspiration to all. And whereas Wenatchee celebrates the history and diversity of our city's lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community, and promotes a society in which all residents can live free from discrimination. And whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to celebrate this harmony in which we coexist. Now therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Wenatchee, and encourage everyone to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists, respect the rights of all people, and to celebrate the great diversity of our city by attending the Pride Festival on Saturday, June 3, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM at Memorial Park. And witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be fixed on this 25th day of May 2023. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Koulas. Is Lincoln here? Come on up, Lincoln. How are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Good. Long time no see.
I know.
Who's with you?
This is Marlene.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
You got a, here you go. Address the council.
Thank y'all so much. Thank y'all so much. Really appreciate this.
Get right up here. That'll work, yeah.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate this. You know, every year, we get these, and I'm just like, nice. You know, it's really great to see y'all here and to see this and know that for a fact, Wenatchee is taking monumental strides in creating an equal opportunity for all people.
Absolutely. Hi, everyone. I'm Marlene. I'm the Vice President at Wenatchee Pride. I want to thank each and every single one of you individually for this proclamation. I think now more than ever, this is incredibly important to stand by us, to uplift us and be allies. And I think it speaks volumes that the city of Wenatchee is willing to do that for us.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
And on that night, if you stay up late enough, look at the building, okay?
Okay.
Okay? So just got to, it's late that time, right? Got to be up maybe at 10:00, 10:30, way past my bedtime. But this building's going to look pretty special that night.
All right, Carrie.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I have, sorry, I'll start with Carrie Page, Director of Human Resources. I have the pleasure of presenting to you our employees who have reached important service milestones. And Mr. Mayor, just for your information, we'll be taking pictures with as much counsel behind you here when we present. And I would like to bring up first our 15-year milestone employees. And with us tonight are Donald Nelson. And Donald is a senior project engineer with the city of Wenatchee. And he's brought along with him his wife Laura, and brother and white, his wife.
Hi, guys.
Thank you for being here, and then the rest of his cheering squad. So, and then I'd also like to bring forward Tim McCord. He's our technology specialist. You all know him well. I think everyone in the audience is his cheering squad.
Can I get a picture of you? Congratulations. One, two, three. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay. And then for our five-year milestone employees, I'd like to invite Ryan Harmon, project engineer, up. And Mr. Rob Jammerman, Director of Public Works. It doesn't really feel like five years, right? Is it 10, if you feel like, actually? And then Matt Collins, our GIS manager.
If we can get a picture taken, where you want us?
You don't mind right in front? Yep, right here, front and center. Come on, Rob.
Let me tuck in my tummy. I'm trying to see which department I like the best.
One, two, three. Thank you. Great. Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you very much.
GIS, GIS.
Always nice to recognize our city employees that do such great work. All right. So we have one, two, three, five action items tonight. The first is regarding our waterfront gateway phase two. Charlotte Mitchell, come on up. What's happening?
Hello. Charlotte Mitchell, project engineer. So this is for our waterfront gateway phase two project, which you might know as the Thurston Street Underpass project. What we're doing is we're going to repair some of the concrete cracking and spalling in there. We're going to paint the walkways on both sides. We're going to upgrade the lighting. We're going to landscape the southeast quadrant of the, of that area. So the north side is landscaped. We're going to try to match that on the other side, or at least make it complementary. And we're going to have, we're going to install cameras that can look down both of the walkways. So we got one bid for that project. It's not a very enticing project for contractors, so we were glad to have the one bid. It was a little bit over the amount that we, I think about $60,000 over. So thank you to Finance Council for, or Committee for approving that additional funding earlier today. And so we, I am here to hopefully have it awarded to KRCI, who was our only and low bidder. There's 30 working days in this project. Construction will start August 7. And of interest probably to the residents of our city, there's going to be a detour in place. They're allowed to have shut Thurston Underpass for 10 working days, but the detour will be removed at night and on the weekends. So it'll just be during working hours that the detour will be in place. Any questions?
Can you refresh me on when that work is scheduled to start?
August 7.
That'll be very interesting, because a lot of people use Thurston to get to the waterfront and to work and sort of as a way around the railroad tracks, because sometimes, so that'll be a pretty big impact, hopefully, if we can all understand it's only for 10 days.
Well, and that's the detour for 10 days. There are 30 working days in the contract, so there might be like single-lane alternating traffic and that sort of thing. But in talking to the contractor, they want to just get in and out, and they understand that, you know, this is a busy spot.
All right. Any other questions for Charlotte? Hearing none, I would then entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for city council to amend the project budget and award the contract for construction of the water gate, waterfront gateway phase two, city project number 1905-2 to KRCI LLC, and further authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to amend the project budget and award the contract for construction of the waterfront gateway phase two, city project number 1905-2 to KRCI LLC, and further authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And our pavement preservation project for this year. What are we doing?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I don't know how to make this map show up. Tim, or somebody, I have it on this computer.
We saw it earlier.
Yeah.
Finance Committee did.
Thank you. Thank you. So this is, these are the streets that we're going to be grinding and repaving this year. We had two bid alternates on the contract. Unfortunately, the bids came in high enough that we had to go with the base bid, which is these streets that you're seeing here on the map. The writing is kind of small, so it's, up north is Pershing and Central, and then we have a tiny section of Fifth at, from Worthing to the roundabout, and then Riverside Drive, and then Worthing from Riverside to Thurston, a section of Matt Howe from Ferry to Lincoln, and then all of Virginia Way. And also, part of this project is a section of Riverside Drive has subsided, I think due to the fact that it's built on an old dump site. And so we're going to dig that up and rehab that more completely. The rest will be just like a mill of two or one and a half inches and then repave, but that one will be a little more in-depth, and that will also involve a detour.
So you're saying my roller coaster ride to work is going to go away?
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
Yep, the plan is to try to get, use a different sort of material and, and see if we can bridge that and make it a little more stable. Yeah. So we had two bids, Granite and CWA. CWA was the low for the base bid, the parent low for, at $1.9 million, sorry. I'm bringing a budget also before you. The Finance Committee had talked about this in January and, and said that it looked good. So thank you for the money from the general fund for that. This project has 60 working days. It's, we're planning to start work June 19, assuming you award the contract. We're working on getting informational flyers sent out to nearby folks right now. So within the next week or two, folks will have a little more information.
Thank you, Charlotte. Yeah, this is our annual sort of pavement preservation program, and we've been sort of going alternating years, bigger and smaller. They did come and ask for $1 million in January, and I think we gave them a half a million dollars of our general fund. And so, and then they're using the street fund and overlay funds for the rest of it. So a little bit smaller in terms of total lane miles, but still making improvements to. to our road system.
Yeah, and I think we're getting a good bang for our buck, this project only has 13 curb ramps in it, so we're not sending, spending such a disproportionately large amount of the money on those curb ramps.
Just, just for one point of clarity and for the record, you said Pershing, is it Pershing or Princeton?
Good catch, Princeton, sorry, Princeton from Maple to Central.
Thank you.
Yes, good catch.
Got lots of peas, Princeton and Poplar and Pershing and, yeah, lots of peas in that area. All right, any questions for Charlotte? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to amend the project budget and award the contract for construction of the 2023 pavement preservation to Central Washington Asphalt and further authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents.
Second. Motion by council member Huffaker, second by council member Koulas, to amend the project budget and award the contract for construction of the 2023 pavement preservation program to Central Washington Asphalt and further authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And what's our next one, Charlotte, you got the whole agenda tonight?
I promise this is the last one and then I'll go away. So for this one, we're asking to, for permission for the mayor to sign a contract with KPG Somus for the construction administration services, they are the firm that have designed our paver for the last two years and they did the construction administration of last year's paver and they did a great job and so we would like them to continue doing a great job, we just don't have the staff to administer all the construction of this paver, so we're asking for help and that's within the budget.
All right, any questions for Charlotte? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve and authorize the mayor to negotiate with KPG Somus for a supplement to their current construction administration services for 2023 pavement preservation project number 2203 and further authorize the mayor to sign an amendment on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion by council member Roger Nospatian, second by council member Harold, to approve and authorize the mayor to negotiate with KPG Somus for a supplement to their current contract for construction administration services for the 2023 pavement preservation project number 2203 and further authorize the mayor to sign an amendment on behalf of the city. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you so much.
All right, next is regarding electronic signatures, Laura, sitting in for Danielle.
Good evening, council, the item before you is resolution number 202308, which authorizes the use of electronic signatures and adopts an electronic record and signature policy. So a lot of the departments have been wanting to move over to electronic use, it's a lot easier, it's a lot faster, we can get things signed a lot quicker, we've been using it internally for HR for internal documents, but the intent is to now start to use this for contracts, things that are usually, that the city clerk usually manages, the, I think the police department also wanted to be able to use it, so the, the policy went through a variety of the different departments to make sure that it could address each of the department's needs. Currently, it's only about $5,000, that gets us what they call envelopes, every time you send an email, you kind of, that's what they charge an envelope, so this will be the first year that we'll kind of anticipate what next year's will look like and then we can kind of come back to the council for next year's budget with the better anticipated spend for the following years, I do anticipate that it'll just continue to increase since again it's a really easy and efficient way to be able to get those signatures and track them as well, so happy to answer any questions you may have.
Pretty much standard operating procedure anymore, I think.
Yep.
Any questions for Laura? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion for the city council to approve resolution number 2023-08, authorizing the use of electronic signatures and adopting an electronic record and signature policy.
Second. Motion by council member Koulas, second by council member Hornby, to adopt resolution 2023-08, authorizing the use of electronic signatures and adopting electronic record and signature policy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, who's sitting in for Darcy today regarding Columbia Corridor Studies Consultant Agreement, because that gets Rob.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm here tonight to request you approve the mayor to sign this contract with Pace Engineering for a study that we're calling it the Columbia Corridor Utilities Study and for those of you, you're aware, we're doing this study downtown called Reimagine Wenatchee, it covers, you know, that downtown core, but the target or the middle of that area is Columbia Avenue and so everybody is focused that they, when we do improvements down there, we want to do them once and do them right and we have a very, very old set of infrastructure down there, water, sewer, and storm and so in order to stay ahead of that, we want to get Pace in there to help us do some comprehensive planning at a, at a ground level detail more than our comp plans, identify what size water mains, what sewer mains need to be replaced and do those all at once so that when the street is rebuilt, as you can imagine, along Columbia Avenue, we will have all the utilities done at that time, so it's a contract for 170,000 and it does go outside of Columbia, but that's the main issue and the three utility funds will be splitting the costs of that to look at those, so we're asking for your approval for the mayor to sign this contract with Pace Engineering. So the idea is 170 will save us maybe lots more, because we'll know what we're doing.
Exactly, and we'll do it once.
Minds me of pavement, like we, we do something and then we pave it and then we go back and do that, we kind of got that corrected, we figured that out, right, over time.
Right.
So.
And that's gonna be a huge project and those are some concrete roads and you're only gonna tear them up once and then perhaps, you know, based on our current code, the water and sewer funds and stormwater can help pay for some of the road improvements and maybe some of the curbs and so there's a way to do some improvements down there, once we figure out what it's supposed to look like.
Yep.
That this is going right with the reimagine process and so hopefully.
It will, we would then be able to include those costs when we talk about our Tiff district in there as well.
Well, Your Honor, I'm gonna make a motion for the city council to approve the professional services agreement with Pace Engineering for the Columbia Corridor Utility Study Project number 2316 and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second. Motion by council member Poyer, second by council member Hornby, to approve the professional services agreement with Pace Engineering for the Columbia Corridor Utility Study Project number 2316 and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob, appreciate you being here tonight, congratulations on your five years. I'm not even sure where to start, the mayor's report, I will say that it was quite an honor last night to be in Spokane, your police department got their accreditation certificates last night, so they've gone through the accreditation process, so I went to Spokane to their WASPIC year-end awards banquet with the chief and our two captains and Nancy Seirey and they got their award yesterday, so that was very fun to go to and see, chief is no longer the in charge, the president of WASPIC, so his term ended last night about 6 o'clock, a glass of whiskey happened about 6:30, so he was celebrating his being done with that, but that was a lot of work and I do appreciate when city staff want to get involved in statewide organizations and chief's done a great job running WASPIC for the last year and being on the executive committee for three or four, I think, so Laura, help fill in the, fill in the blanks here.
So we're celebrating Public Works Week and the Public Works team had their annual rodeo on Wednesday, so it's great to be able to see the staff and the talented staff that we have that operate, that have a machinery and do all of the work in the city, council member Poyer also tried his hand, I heard you did pretty well.
Did you try?
Oh, yeah, every, every one.
So really fun and again, always a great celebration of our staff.
Yep, Rob and I barbecued for 100 people or more, yeah.
Yeah.
Hour and a half straight of barbecuing, yeah, I think I still smell like the barbecue.
Another fun celebration or two today, Lincoln Park reopened on Tuesday and then the Okanagan Community Garden opened earlier today, so there was a lot of community that was present for that and that park, Lincoln Park is the nonstop visitors, so now it's officially available for everyone and then a couple more, just Monday is a holiday, so city offices will be closed on Monday and then lastly, the mayor and I met with CAFE earlier this week, they are starting a leadership academy program that will get a variety of students through a 20-week program, I think they said it was, to learn about civic engagement, government and so in the coming weeks, you'll see some visitors who will be at meetings to learn about what we do here, so we'll introduce them when they're here and I think that's all I got.
TIB was in Wenatchee for their meeting last week, so we, Jacob presented some stuff and I gave them a welcome, so they were in town for a couple of days, always nice to have the Transportation Improvement Board here checking on our work and making sure we're doing all the right things that we're supposed to do. Council members? I know we did want to talk a little bit about work sessions, we don't have one scheduled in June yet, but maybe in July.
Right, so we are working on a work session on roundabouts for you all, so I know staff is hard in getting all of that confirmation, the data, information and data, so not for June, but potentially July or August, so we'll keep you all posted on what additional comment or topics can be on there or if there are any that you all would like us to prepare for that time, be happy to do that as well.
So that would be July 13th, potentially.
I believe it, uh, let's see here. No, it would be the 20th.
Because that's a, that's a, that's a double, that's a double miss, right? So we missed the 6th and the 13th, excuse me, 13th is regular session, so 20th would be the work session.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Council members? I do know that I was talking with one of our code enforcement people, it sounded like the cleanup event went very well on a couple Saturdays ago, lots of cleanup stuff, I don't know how many, four loads of tires and something we need to continue to make sure we do and so I think that went very well, I think that was Mother's Day weekend or somewhere around there. How's the parking lot?
Oh, Pivas Parking Lot, construction starts on May 30th, so the west parking lot next to Worthing will be tore up, it'll be out for about two months, so I'm concerned about the underpasses being both blocked, so I'll talk to you, I find not exactly timing, need to educate everyone down there. And then the mayor and I also got dunked on that Saturday, not very many people came down to dunk the mayor, kind of disappointing, but on the other hand, I got dunked a lot.
I threatened them, though. Yeah? Adults, I said, I'll raise your taxes and the kids that threw, I said, I know your teacher, they all missed.
So the mayor put some money down and said every kid that walks by could dunk me for free.
Yeah.
And it worked.
Good.
Well, that was fun, glad you guys raised some money, that was, that was awesome.
Anything else? Linda, Jose?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yesterday I attended the Shalane Douglas Homeless Task Force, we had the evaluation, we did the 2023 to 2025 funding allocation recommendations for all the programs that applied, I can't explain and tell you how much amount was, because it's so many numbers, but council members, if you're interested in finding out, I have the documents in hand with me if you want to know and we did the ceremony for Lincoln Park.
Yep.
Mayor, that was a great time out there, I forgot to mention, thank you, council members who were there for the support, I appreciate that.
And if you haven't been out there, you need to get out there and take a look at it, that park turned out really, really nice, fun to see, lots going on in that park and it was fun to see way fewer people living in campers and families using it and it looked like how Lincoln Park should look, so that was pretty cool. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, I guess we'll see you in two weeks.
Oh, one more thing?
Yeah, Linda?
I won't be here on the 8th, I will be at a conference for the Washington Society for Association of Sons, representing the commission.
Excellent. All right, with that.